Yeah, now the shot on purpose.
I'm never in it. I'm never in that.
Kate's running a little late. Justin already had exotic hunt set up already.
He said he can be gone the rest of the year.
Yeah. He said he's gonna miss both the last two and the next two.
Are we gonna try to move that our meeting to December twenty-third or are we just gonna?
To the day two.
Let's move it to the day two.
We done last three years? Yes, sir, we sure have. Have a state and a meeting. Yeah, 'cause I would miss the next one, my daughter graduates. Put their masters on that day. Grab the books.
Get your pay rent.
Yeah, I'm not as big as I want to pay your rent anymore.
It's up to y'all.
No, we don't have to wait on her.
No, it's okay, I mean. If we get something you just can't live without or anything, we'll go around it. All right, we called to order the regular meeting for Trinity Bay Conservation District. Today is Wednesday, November the twelfth, twenty twenty-five, nine a.m. And we'll start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom comes, and it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from either. For thine is the kingdom, and power, and glory forever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one and eternal. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, and under God, one and eternal.
I think we're government. That's right. We got public comment today and Gloria has signed it? Let's get for us today, Gloria.
Thank you, thank you. We're ready to speak to you all. This is about an agenda items number seventeen. And it is considering possible action of permitting and agreement between Dutton Lake LLC and Trinity Bay to provide sewer servers to ninety-nine housing units on Barbara six six sixty three. It costs a nine thousand two hundred, uh, hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay, my question here, and I'm a little confused about it, and maybe when we get to the side of our can explain it, are they asking us to not build the sewer lines, not put the water lines in, but just to, I don't know, at least to explain, I don't know if it has to do, like I said, with putting the sewer lines in for them?
You wanna wait, Jerry, and explain that later, you wanna do it now? It's up to you.
Okay, well, I'll explain it at the end of the agenda item.
Okay.
If you have any questions then we'll answer them at that time.
Okay, you'll let me.
I will. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Item number four is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held October eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Read over the minutes yesterday and didn't see any issues needed to be corrected. And so I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Have a motion second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item five, approve financial reports for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
The general fund, we received twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-
Turn on the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's a problem.
Yeah, mine's off too, but it's okay. One man, one man, different issue.
That's the problem. Oh, no, there you go.
We can live, Will.
There we go. General fund revenue, we received twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Our expenditures were four hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents. We're eighty-three point three three percent into the fiscal year, and we've expended eight point three two percent of the budget. Fund balances for all funds were seven million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, fifty-seven dollars and five cents. Water and sewer revenues were seven hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-six cents. We expended seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-four cents. We're eighty-three eighty-three into the fiscal year, and we've spent eight point five six. Fund balance, again, for all accounts, is seven million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, fifty-seven dollars and five cents.
Make a motion to approve financial reports, is read?
Seven.
Motion to second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number six, approve the tax report for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, in October, we received, uh, from Chambers County, we received nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-six cents at a collection rate of point four six. October last year, we received twenty-seven thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents with a point six one percent collection rate. Jefferson County, we received forty-five dollars and seventeen cents at a collection rate of point two oh. Uh, last year at this time, we received a hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents at a collection rate of point five seven.
Motion to approve tax report, is read?
Seven.
Motion to second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, review and consider approval of accounts payable.
Accounts payable for the month was twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents. This is what people owe us for broken fire hydrants and so on and so forth that we bill for. Uh, unpaid accounts, we didn't have time to get them in this month. Being, uh, October being the first month out of the year, as you can see, we spent, bought a bunch of stuff. So it's a kinda a big sludge right in October the first, so it's just a new year's. Accounts payable for the month was five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Uh, we bought, uh, another, uh, round of meters, uh, auto reads. So we took two hundred and five thousand, one hundred and six dollars and sixty-four cents out of the construction, utility construction fund to pay for five hundred meters. Two hundred and fifty, excuse me.
Make a motion to approve, uh, accounts payable, all in one.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item eight, uh, LGA will send us thirty percent designs middle of bridges for Highway sixty-five, Highway one twenty-four to TexDOT, Chambers County and Trinity Bay by the end of this month.
Yes, sir, uh, they are, the design is in thirty-five, it's thirty percent. It was submitted to TexDOT, and we tried to have a meeting, uh, last Friday. But whenever he sent his invitation out, he didn't invite Trinity Bay, the engineer, or the county. So they canceled it for last Friday. So they were gonna try to do it again this Friday, but I haven't got an invite yet. But TexDOT does have it, they have reviewed it, and we're gonna sit down and go over, this is the plans for the two bridges that we're building on sixty-five and one twenty-four. So, uh, to see what their comments are as far as that goes. I do have a set of plans in my office, but they're very thick and very detailed, so there really wasn't anything that I could put up to look at as far as that goes. But they are at the thirty percent mark.
Very good.
So as soon as, uh, so we shouldn't be having a meeting with them. If not this week, next week.
Okay.
There's the actual front of the plans there, showing, uh, showing that it's been done. And this is, uh, the two bridges are gonna cost, uh, pretty much eleven million, uh, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. So this is everything, a list of everything that's included as to what it's gonna cost as far as mobilization, traffic control, everything that it's gonna cost to build these two bridges.
That's to do both of them?
That's to do both of them, yes, sir. Eleven million dollars.
I wonder if that's to do both of them at the same time? If there's any synergies with that, or if? I'm just asking. I'm just wondering if there's any synergies that saves money to get to that eleven million, or if you done them separately, if it would drive-
The distance in between them, you can't really work them concurrently. I mean, you can work them at the same time.
Right.
Totally two different crew, two different everybody. You can't really work them.
Okay.
And get some efficiencies.
Okay. I was curious. Very good. All right, move to item nine, consider possible action on handcomer sewer plant inspection.
Uh, yes, we had an inspection come out, Mr. Coleman from T C U came out, and we had, uh, he shows that we had no violations, other than we had some foam on top. There was sludge in the corners and a few things here and there. We documented where we took care of all of this stuff and sent it to him, so, uh, we're pretty good on inspections. We're still having trouble with, uh, meeting permit with ammonia, uh, but also Manuel has gotten involved in that with LGA and working with the T C U. We're, uh, doing, uh, I guess, very detailed testing and so on and so forth. And most of it is just operation of the plant, of how much you need, how much sewer, uh, sludge you need to waste and so on and so forth to keep it operating like it's supposed to. So it's a kind of a fine tune, and we're trying to find the sweet spot, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And, uh, to get it back up and get it running exactly like it's supposed to. And, uh, like I said, I told Manuel this is his first job, whenever he's here, to get this thing into, uh, compliance. Will we get fined again for ammonia? I don't know. We have, we've been fined once before, and, uh, but like I said, that we're trying to get it operating. We've done all kind of stuff to it, to, and LGA has been involved in everything.
How far out are we? I mean, is it close?
It's very close. Cause, uh, like I said, if you don't waste enough, uh, sludge, you start getting a whole bunch of foam, which is a violation. And if you waste too much sludge, then you don't have enough to regenerate for the bugs to eat it up, and so on and so forth. So we're doing detail testing and everything else to try to use where we're, we're operating like it's supposed to. Uh, whenever, I think, I don't know if I mentioned this one before, but, uh, anyway, uh, uh, whenever it came in, our Tonka water plants, I actually had Tonka come down and spend a week with our operators. And they actually, step by step, went through everything with the testing and how to operate and, and all this other kinda stuff. That way they, they knew what they were doing. This is pretty much a new plant that was dumped on us, and their ship has some training come with it, but there was no training or anything else, so this is what we're pretty much doing, is doing the training to get us where we need to be.
Who's doing the training?
Uh, right now, LGA is. We have their engineers and everything coming in.
They built it, didn't they?
To do the detail testing.
Did LKA build it?
Yes. Yes, they, they're the ones that built it for, for the county, and then it was given to us, yes.
Very good.
So we're getting there.
No action needed on?
No, sir, it's kind of an update.
Item ten, consider possible action on the Winnie wastewater plant mandatory comprehensive evaluation and corrective action plan, March twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Rick mightn't remember this, uh, back whenever we were in the trailer over here, uh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, they sent a, uh, an inspection crew down from the T C U with like eight people. And they came down and they went through our plant and fined two hundred and forty. I mean, they tested everything, made sure like the capacity for, uh, chemical retention was large enough and so on and so forth, and it was a very detailed inspection. And there was, it was never closed out. So they came, and everything that we were asked to do, uh, we, we had done, and everything was up and doing well. And for, I haven't gotten anything in writing yet, but there was no violations. Everything that we were supposed to do at that time, this is whenever I had Tonka come in and teach these guys how to operate. So anyway, we passed and everything was good. All the way back from two thousand and seventeen, they even did some jar testing and everything while they were there at this time, and everything was good. So, uh, far as I know, we got a clean bill of health there. I haven't gotten anything in writing yet, but like I said, this has been since two thousand and seventeen. And we did have to do a lot of stuff. We repacked all the filters, uh, containment wasn't large enough. There were just tons of lists, long list of where the plant had been just turned on and run, and all had never been changed, and they just run it in the ground and then, uh, so we did millions of dollars worth of improvements to it, and it, uh, we're considered, uh, superior water plant. So that means that we haven't had any violations within five years, and so we have a superior water system. So this is just an update.
Very good. Any questions? All right, item eleven, consider possible action approving a payment for ninety-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars to East Tex Utility for the work completed, and a change order for twenty thousand, five hundred dollars to asphalt driveway four hundred and seventy feet by ten feet wide, forty feet at the entrance, twenty-four feet wide, coming from fourteen oh six.
Yes, sir, they, uh, they, they finished the job pretty much and it cleaned up, but they weren't able to get a good sample. Uh, Michael Joseph told me yesterday, or day four yesterday, wrong yesterday, uh, that they got one good sample and one bad sample. So they went ahead and rechlorinated it again. So they have it soaking in, and so, but they did get one good sample, but, uh, we wanna make darn sure it's clean before we do anything else. So anyway, uh, right now, they supercharged it with chlorine again, and while we were there, they, they ran the line down the edge of the driveway, and when it rained a little bit the other day, it, uh, it turned mud on top of it. So they have to have a contractor come in and asphalt up by, uh, by Interstate ten, the excess road. So I asked them to give me a price to asphalt our driveway in there, so we don't have to worry about it. It's all where the driveway, and actually, I changed the, the price on here to twenty-four thousand, cause after I did that, that, uh, operator came back and said, from, from where the driveway is over into the door, we have an electric forklift that, uh, red and forklift, not all terrain, and they unload, uh, totes of chemicals and stuff there, and it gets muddy the same way. So I asked them to add that little piece in where they can get in and out of the building on all the asphalt. So it went up from twenty thousand, five hundred to twenty-four thousand, so. Uh, while they're there, uh, we don't have to pay for the move in and this and that and other. And this is two inches thick, so this is, it's four hundred and seventy feet, ten foot wide, and then up like the entrance is forty feet by twenty-four foot wide, so that's why we have asphalt.
That's where our driveway going from fourteen oh six back to the water plant.
To the operator's building right there, and coming off the side in front of the generator and going in the back door where they can, uh, offload totes from trucks. I'd say we've got a little Toyota electric forklift that we used to unload totes with, so we're making it all weather while they're there. So I don't think that's a bad thing. So I'm asking, uh, to pay them and for this change order. And we don't, oh, I think all we have left, uh, left is contingency as far as that goes. Fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
You don't want to pay anything?
Yeah, we're paying, yeah.
So they're, they're, they're built out?
That it's all built out, all they need to do is finish the test, uh, good sample, and-
And they're better than building.
Yeah. And that's all we've got left is retaining.
When will we get the results from the sample?
They pulled it out on Thursday.
Thursday? Well, he told me that they got a good one. Uh, Monday, he told me that they got a good one and a bad one, so he told me they rechlorinated some of them. The longer they sit, let it sit, the better off we are as far as that goes, so, uh, it shouldn't be long. If not, uh, I've seen it where, and David and I both seen it, if you don't plug the line like that at night, an animal will get inside of it. So if it, if an animal or something like that, they keep failing, they're gonna have to, like, take one of those connections loose, uh, make a fire hydrant tap or something, try to blow it out of there, cause, uh, it happens. And, uh, so anyway, uh, but they said they had one good, one bad, so listen, so, but it's still their responsibility to, that it's gotta be good for weeks.
Yeah, handover things.
And I'm getting concerned about how much water they're using to flush this thing. So, anyway, but we're getting there.
Now, I like the idea that your asphalt went back around for ease and safety reasons.
Yes, sir. Actually, what we did, uh, last time, we took all the rock that we got out of the, the filters. There was a nice peat gravel, and put it on there, and it made a pretty nice surface. But once they dug along the side of the driveway and put the dirt, you, you can't get it out. So, you know, it left us a thin, uh, muddy track to go in and out of there, so, uh, I think it's worth it while we're there. For twenty-four thousand dollars, it's not bad.
I made a motion to approve payment ninety-one thousand, five eighty-four to East Tex Utility, including change order twenty thousand, five hundred.
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four, I would change.
Twenty-four thousand.
Yes, sir, behind the building.
That's where my discrepancy was, sir.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion to second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item twelve, consider possible action on the water tank site.
Uh, here's, I, I didn't show you, but here's a little piece that we're adding from the driveway into the back of the plant to be able to put, uh, to bring the totes in and out. It's still, uh, like I said, they approved our plant, other than them just looking at it and we're mainly waiting on the bonds to go from there. So there's really no action to take on, it's just an update.
What we had on the bond, we know?
Uh, yes, that's a, it's a, another item coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Very good, uh. So there's no, no action here?
No, sir.
All right, item fourteen, consider possible action approving a sewer agreement between Trinity Bay and the city of Atlantic.
Let's get thirteen.
I'm sorry. Keep me in line. Let's do item thirteen, consider possible action on Westside wastewater evaluation study. Task order three is to develop a final report.
Yes, sir, I received the final report yesterday. Uh, I haven't, I haven't read it yet, but I have, uh, received the final report, and I think we owe about six thousand dollars, and the whole study's open with. But, uh, they emailed me the, the completed study yesterday, but I just, I hadn't had a chance to read it yet. But it's pretty much the same thing that they came in and, and told us all about. There wasn't really any other changes, they just, there was a few things that they followed up as far as, uh, what's that, some pump sizing and so on and so forth like that, that Diane and I, uh, they just wanted to make sure that we were correct and so on and so forth. So, but, uh, it's finished, except for the final payment, and, uh, and I'll, uh, I'll print them and, and bind them or something, so everybody can have them, like, it's up to y'all. But I didn't have time to print them and put them in the book today, so, but it is finished.
Very good. Item number fourteen, consider possible action having a sewer agreement between Trinity Bay and the city of Atlantic.
Okay, and, uh, stay, uh, for this one to be taken into executive session, just pursuant to consultation or district's attorney, but we can do it at the very end of the meeting.
We'll do it at the end, okay. Move to item.
Yes, sir.
Item number fifteen is discuss and take action if necessary on annual service award lunching, retirement service, safety awards for employees on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, five.
Yes, sir, uh, this is our annual safety award lunching, uh, that we give, uh, for, to the employees and give out safety awards at the town, usually give them, uh, two hundred dollar safety awards. So I'm asking the board, uh, approval to, we usually, uh, David gets, uh, a bid and do a steak lunching or something like that, and have some nice safety awards and stuff. And that would be on, uh, Tuesday, uh, December the twenty-third. We'll have, uh, we'll have our regular meeting at that time, and then afterwards have lunch.
Very good, we, we will move, we won't have a regular meeting at the beginning of next month.
Yes, sir, I'll be on the twenty-third.
We'll move it to December twenty, twenty-third as well. Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'd make a motion to approve annual service award lunching, retirement service, and safety awards, and move the December meeting to December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Well, so again.
Motion to second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item sixteen, yeah, is to elect more positions, and, and we're, we're missing one more member, so we'll table it, and, uh, I guess, uh-
You have to just table it and table it.
Till, till January, exactly. Hopefully. All right, item seventeen, consider possible action approving an agreement between Dutton Lake LLC and Trinity Bay to provide sewer service to ninety-nine housing units on FM sixteen sixty-three in Ladue at a cost of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, uh, we had a capacity study done by LGA, and at that time, they said that the water line needed to be upgraded from a six inch- needed to be upgraded from a six inch to an eight inch. But since we installed the twenty-four that we just installed, we have enough water now to where the water line does not need to be upgraded. Same way with the sewer force main does not need to be upgraded. What needs to be upgraded is the, is the two cylinder pump stations, one at McDonald's and one in front of Tijuana's. And they are paying us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to put new pumps and control valves and upsize it. So we're not doing anything, no work or anything else in their part. But we'll upgrade the stations, but they're paying us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do it.
There's no cost out of our pocket.
No cost out of our pocket, yes. The force main is large enough and they did, they paid for the capacity study two years ago, I think, whenever they first started looking at this. So anyway, so the twenty that we just put in gave enough water in that area to where it's up to fifty-six pounds. So everything's good, force main's good, and they're paying us to upgrade the pumps and control valves and everything. Plus, they'll be putting their own pump station inside to pump into our force main, and I require them to put generator backup and everything.
These lift stations, are they down in the pit? The motors are up?
Most of them are submersible. Used to be, a lot of them used to be on top of the ground, and majority of them nowadays are submersible, where you actually, there's a guide rail system and you drop it down into the bottom of the tank and it pumps out. Only problem with that is if you have to get inside, it's considered a confined space. So you have to get a blower and all that other kind of stuff that you go in. But most of them have a chain on them with a guide rail system where you just take them and pull the pump up, and you don't have to get down inside.
I wrote a story, news story.
Yes, sir.
A couple, three months ago about Waters District, they had lift stations and employees had to go down, they were working on the lift pump, and they had to go down to the pump itself, isolated. And one man went down, second man entered to assist, he went down, then the third man went down to assist the two, the three. They had to do a recovery with it.
Yes.
And so do we have issues with that?
No, sir. None of ours are that large. Whenever I was in Baltimore, I had huge underground lift stations, some over thirty-six inch ponds, let's say a seventy inch line coming into the pump station. But here, we don't have that. The largest one we have is Altell. You open the doors up and it's all right there. And like I say, at the sewer plant, some of the quick connects down at the bottom were rusted out and stuff. So we hired a contractor to come in there and replace the piping and stuff. So really true, all you have to do is hook onto that chain and pull the pump up and then drop another pump in, as long as all the piping and stuff is good. And like I say, at the sewer plant, year or two ago, I think it was, we hired a contractor to go in there and replace all the base plates, and they replaced all the check valves and everything else. The one at Altell, it's got new guard rails, and we put new check valves and everything in, and we added a generator and like it's quiet.
Sounds like they didn't do air testing before.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes.
A lot of these guys are not, they work around H2As a lot.
Yes, sir. It's considered a confined space, and like I say, myself and David and several of the guys that came from Baltimore, we would bring a blower, and nine times out of ten, we'd have the fire department come test. Because we could have our own tester, but it was better to have an independent party to come in and to test the thing. So if we have to do something like that, we're aware of it.
When the fire department comes up and does testing, it's all documented.
Yeah.
If we need to put blowers in there.
Yeah.
We have a lot of blowers here since I've been here and blown systems for a while and then just before we go down.
Did I ask all your questions on Dutton Lakes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The reason why he went with ninety-nine houses is over a hundred, we have to add two entrances. So that's why he cut it back to ninety-nine. But if you look, look here, this is a map of what they're doing. They're having, that's their retention pond, and it butts up to our drainage ditch. So I made them leave us a fifteen foot easement where we'd be going in there and go our side of the ditch. And that's, that's future growth in the back and probably a future growth on, that was Tao's piece, and the next piece over is Yale's piece. So anyways, growth comes, that's why we're, you know.
Oh, it's coming, yes, sir. Just a quick question, and this is from my personal clarification. Whenever a developer does come in, like you said, in those typical places, so they need water and sewer, they pay us, they pay Trinity Bay to put in those pipes for water.
Not all the time. It depends. In the past, we would do that to help, because there were, everybody was broke. So to pick up customers, we would have them buy all the materials and everything else, and we would actually install the piping. Or, and now that we have so much of this going on, it just kind of depends, like this one, if they were to have upgraded lines, we would have asked them to do it.
So is there a policy, I mean, written policy that states that the developer will have to absorb the cost of the sewer pipelines?
Yes, we, in fact, the agreement that we have in it, Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, but it says in there that Trinity Bay will not pay for any capital improvement programs or anything. We won't add on to our water plant or sewer plant or do anything like that. The developer would have to pay.
Okay, that's good then.
Uh, no.
No, sir. I let you, let you. Well, yes, you need to approve.
Yeah, I should make a motion to approve the agreement between Trinity Bay and Dutton Lake LLC. There is a written agreement between the two entities.
Got you.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between Dutton Lake LLC and Trinity Bay to provide sewer service to ninety-nine housing units on FM sixteen sixty-three in Ladue Road at a cost of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
The motion is second, all in favor? Item eighteen, consider possible action on the bond sale.
It's moving forward.
Yeah, the TCEQ, they've gotten a lot more stringent, so they sent us about eighteen questions to clarify our application. So engineers answered the majority of them. There was one for, I think, the financial advisor, and we submitted the supplemental information to them on Monday. So we're still just waiting for them to, it's in technical review, so they're still just reviewing everything.
After there, after we have TCEQ approval, about how long will it take?
So we'll get there, we'll get the order, and then it'll just go kind of to the financial advisor. I still have to say, because you have to give Attorney General approval and everything, it's still gonna be at least sixty days.
Okay, so a couple of months after?
So first quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, that works with our timeline, Jerry? On everything? We're good?
Yeah, but TCEQ is good because they've got our, what they've asked us to do with the tank and it's, they have it moving forward, so it's all.
I know there's nothing we can do about it, but I'm just wondering, making sure we weren't going to be able to have a problem.
No, sir, I think we, Kate's help and the engineers and everything, we're providing everything they're asking for.
Sounds good. All right. On to item nineteen, consider possible action approving resolution twenty-five dash fourteen, Chambers County, twenty twenty-five certified tax roll.
We, we approved the certified amount, this is approving the certified tax roll. This is standard procedure for Chambers County and Jefferson County.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five fourteen, Chambers County, twenty twenty-five certified tax roll.
Motion is second, all in favor? Item twenty, consider possible action approving resolution twenty-five fifteen, Jefferson County, twenty twenty-five certified tax roll.
Same thing. I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty-five fifteen, Jefferson County, twenty twenty-five certified tax roll.
Motion is second, all in favor? Item twenty-one, consider possible action allowing federal facilities to continue to operate during government shutdown and allow federal employees with valid federal ID to continue water and sewer service until the shutdown is over with no penalty if paid in full by the next billing cycle after the shutdown is over.
Yes, sir. We have Big Hill, we have US Fish and Wildlife, and doesn't affect the state, but all the federal facilities that we serve. So I didn't turn them off because they can't pay their bill. So they will pay as soon as, as they open the government backup, which is supposed to be today. So anyway, and then it was getting to the point, been shut down so long that the employees were coming in and asking if we could help them because they wouldn't be able to pay their bill this month. So I felt like that if they showed a federal, a valid federal ID, that we wouldn't shut them off, and then they have to catch it back up as soon as they get paid. That was just my thinking, but that's up to the board.
My son's in the army and.
I know where it is. Yeah, so this is a, this is a good faith deal for Trinity Bay.
And I heard before the meeting, coming in that the federal government was supposed to have a vote on it this evening, and monies could go out seventy percent of their wages would be paid right away, and then the balance.
Seventy percent of that weight?
Right.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, I read this and I thought that was kind of interesting, and then I, like you, I thought, wow, we do have federal facilities.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering the same thing, I was like, sleep.
Yeah. Think about it. Well, I make a motion allowing federal facilities to continue to operate during a government shutdown and allow federal employees with valid federal ID to continue water and sewer service until the shutdown is over with no penalty if paid in full by the next billing cycle after the shutdown is over.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Do we want to go into executive session now, Kate, or wait till after reports? Okay, no problem. Drainage report?
Sorry, I'm here, this is our, this is our new dose of the recent water, the nice photos are with, we actually received, we were able to receive all of our equipment that we purchased. We have all four pieces of that, there are pictures of them later in the back of the report. Rust ditch, better crew working on this area. We're not only cleaning, we're resetting the shelf too. We're gonna work this all the way to the Chambers County line. Something that had been done a while, we've been able to spray it, thanks to the helicopter, it's helped soften up a lot of ventilation treating and stuff in there. But these guys are pushing forward. We've got three pieces of equipment in there, long reach, short reach, and the dozens. The guys are making pretty good tracks in there. Here's some of the work that they do cleaning, and then this next picture is what it looks like after the dogger comes through and redecks the shelf there. Which really enables us to get back in there for demo maintenance. Like now we can go around a tractor and then mow it. And that's kind of the ultimate goal they're looking for.
Will you be doing the other side of that?
Yes, sir. We are, but when, once we reach the Chambers County line, we will, we're actually gonna work across the ditch and come back down. And then there's another ditch that we're gonna attack too.
So just like what you do on Spinning.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The double valve tributary, we did the west side, we completed that side, pulled the machine, took care of another little job, and now we are almost finished with the east side. And that will do both sides of this tributary on the bottom end where it dumps into double valve. This is the ditch that I showed you pictures of before, that you couldn't even see the ditch, and now we can see both sides. And like I said, we are, he's gonna, he's doing some touching on too, you can see rust and stuff in the bottom of the ditch, we're gonna take care of that as we come out. So that leg is almost finished, and then we're gonna jump across the street, take care of the other side of that. The operator finished the section between Fairview in nineteen forty-one, we're continuing to press south, south of nineteen forty-one. This is near, pretty close to nineteen forty-one there, that I took this the other day. Done a pretty good job getting that ditch tuned up, it's really nice. Again, a lot of that we can, we can now mow with a bad wing tractor mower and try to help keep that maintained. Water bottle tributary, this isn't too far from where that previous slide was from. This dumps right into the main part of water bottle and helps drain some of those fields. Starting on ten twenty-seven, it does get pretty gnarly right before it dumps into water bottle, and it flows up along fields and stuff, rice field and farming fields upstream. So this is gonna help get that water on out of there and the fields above north of that. And then I have, this is pictures of our machines, that's the PC two ninety that we purchased, and then there's the water department's PC forty-five, our D sixty-one belter with a six-way blade, that'll complement our heavy belter pretty well. And then that's the mid-sized one thirty machine that we'll utilize on the drainage. And then the sprayers, on the agenda, it has the list of where they set up at, I kind of summarize that in this, in this, in all, when the helicopter went up a couple of weeks ago, they covered four hundred and twenty-five acres, including rush ditch, hawking, water bottle, and other tributaries along the way. We may have got a little bit of a frost with this gold front that comes through, there are a couple of tributaries we're gonna try to touch up. Right here, we're at the end of the spray season. Means we're starting to end up dying. Those crews will, I don't wanna say dissolve, but they will drop into our normal crew fencing, pipe setting, stuff like any, anything that we have to come about. And we're still going to send the tractors out with the bad wings, because Lord knows we got a lot of long ditch to keep mowing. And that's my report.
I haven't seen anything where you're using the dry line. Do we have an operator for drains out there?
So if you get into that, we actually have, next week, we're scheduled for some interviews. I've had six that I know of for sure are scheduled for next week, unless we got some late Thursday evening before my day, I wasn't here, so I'll go ahead and get the brakes to put on. But yes, we have some individuals interested in running the dry line.
These are trained and running.
Yeah.
Right. There's a big difference.
Yes, there is.
Here's a map of what they sprayed with the helicopter this time to just give you an idea. And it was a pretty good area.
All right, very good. Water report?
As y'all know, we're dry. We're very dry, and we're seeing a lot of leaks due to it, getting a lot of calls from the operation. We did get several calls over on Kane Road that went out to fix a three-inch line, bent up several times, couldn't find the leak, went out there last week, finally found it. Fixed a six-inch line on our road and then one on sixty-one. The last two weekends, we've run extra crews on Fridays to try to catch up. We fixed about twenty additional leaks on top of that. So there's a lot of leaks out there, it's not gonna get any better, we're getting some rain. We only put in two grinders last month with the discharge lines, they cleaned up to them to be about two hundred and forty feet. We did hire another meter reader since we had our last meeting. We're up, we're full staff on meter readers right now, but we still have one out on medical issues. And he's been out several weeks and probably at least a couple more weeks still to come. So when he gets back, we'll be back up to speed. Josh stepped in and really got everybody, he has a car on this, on our main grid, we're running both units now, one three, one side, one three the other side. We discussed it and requiring the meter readers to put in X amount of meters a month now on their tank outs since we have the other two fifty. Now, the other guys are still putting it in on Fridays when they can work. But your meter reader put in, since we hired them two weeks ago, they've put in. But your meter reader put in, since we hired him two weeks ago, they've put in 89 meters, 58 meters, and two commercial meters, one for Sonic up there and the other one from McDonald's. So we've got a few inch and a half meters in finally, and we're starting to get the commercial out now. We're right with that.
We received a TCU enforcement for the Anawak Sewer Plant, which is from several years ago that for ammonia. And since Anawak built their new plant and we replaced the floor, it was taken care of, so that enforcement's taken care of. The city of Anawak plans to start using Trinity based water today. They were going to do it Monday, but yesterday was the holidays, so they put it off. So they should, they signed for service, and they should start buying water from us probably today. And we'll supply them water for several months until they get their plant back up and serviced. We had Durham Engineering come out and inspect all of our water tanks, and we just got the report back. LNBA is raising their rates from 345 to 375. That's an agreed order for that. Manual summarize the report from Durham. Windy plant, the roof screen is bad. Same thing with the Windy Water Plant, the roof screen's bad. Oak Island leak on in and out at high altitude valves leaking. Install locks on the manway going up so you can't get up and crawl up on top of the tank. And Windy Water Plant, screen on the roof. White's Park replaced rubber gasket on the flap seal, manual says it's actually bent. So we're buying a whole new flap valve. It's only about 500 bucks, and they've been installed. Locks on the manways, replace the roof screens. So really truly, there wasn't a whole lot of money into them that we needed to do anything to them other than replace the screens, keep bugs out, and stuff like that. I haven't had it here, but I've had it a couple of times in Beaumont where guys crawled up on top of the water towers and threatened to jump and all this other kind of stuff until the drugs wore off, and then the fire department got down. So anyway, so that's what the locks on the manway are for, so they can't crawl up the liner and get up there. I've been on top of them, but I think we'll hire somebody to replace it. You kind of come over and crawl up there. And like I say, LNBA went up on their water rates. And now we'd like to go into executive session and talk about petition by Red Forest GP Investments.
Very good. We'll adjourn into executive session. It's 9:48. Me either, I'll be there or somebody will be there for me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
N B O C A, and do you live in James County?
You want to?
Oh, okay, so. Okay, so where do you live in Florida? Which county? So you're in here?
Yes, I was with you, we were, we were current. So over there, there was ten, I also moved to the Chinese. So I've been in James Park while I was still doing one, so I've been there. 2000 years on Hall.
Okay, so that's all from your experience?
Yes, ma'am. Before that, I started with the current.
1928. You said that in April?
Carolina, Virginia, Oklahoma, Ohio, and Blackman.
Okay, so are you a freshman here? Which are? Okay, perfect. That's great. I've missed several meetings, unfortunately.
This is my first.
Oh, good. Okay, well then we're glad you're on board, which needed, which legally is the same, we have a position filled. Okay. We got a water. Okay, here we go, it takes several. Perfect.
I don't know if you were around back in Kit and John, were still?
Yeah, well, I paper, I mean, I always hear a little bit of story that they were here. But see, we speak, I'm reading, started in 10 years ago. So that was, Kit was already gone. Yeah, and so Jerry was here, and, but no, I remember Kit.
Yeah, first started with the work for Trinity. And did a couple of projects with under Jay years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was one, Mr. Horace.
Yeah. I remember all those things. Now, now, you don't have to if you don't want to, but Mike gave me his phone number, or if I had a question about something, and then you'd go, hey, Mike, did that even, sure?
Sure. 409, 466, 10, 86.
Okay. People get real nervous that people. You know, I'm going to lie, it turns on in the morning. Now, but now if Mike was real good, or something came up and I had a question about something, I guess you'd be more than happy to tell you. So welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Yes. No, it's very exciting.
Christian, no. When you say that, I saw a phone call.
Yeah. Come back, you didn't know, adjourn the meeting. Okay. When I asked him, it's just, you know. I think I went to. It was like. What do you know? Put it on the bathroom wall or something. Oh, okay. You know, we have this meeting in the county, Commissioner's Court is going on.
Yeah, I have it on.
What do you do? Why haven't I?
Yeah.
I don't have?
Nothing, I had, I mean, just, yeah. Well, most of the people, I don't even know if you ever know if someone passed a cell phone or anything, so it's fine.
That's true.
There's no point in, yeah.
That's true. Okay, okay, Mando, your official title is then?
Waters.
Water Superintendent. Thank you. All right, y'all, have a good one.
See you later.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you.
Does Kate have one in there?
No.
I was going to say, you might want to change that Y to an A.
H, K.
Like a catch. I don't know how long it's been like that, but I just noticed it. Yes, I just.
Nobody says, probably, probably all were given that next, though not where it is.
Yeah, just.
I'll change it.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, I'm here with Matt.
Josh Taylor.
Josh. Are you kin to Chris Taylor, works for us?
Probably, I don't know.
Christopher DePape, same last name.
I don't know him personally, but pretty much all of them, we're all related somehow.
He told me that. He told me that.
Who?
Chris. He's like, no, I don't know who he is, I don't know that.
Chris?
He has Scott, did he tell you? Or you can Scott?
Yes.
That's his son.
Yes. He's doing that a lot, yeah.
How are you, cousin?
Second cousins.
So.
So it's all now.
They're cousins. And he would have worked here when your mom worked here, so he would have heard, but his mom must have retired from that farm.
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's a bunch of Kales over here.
You guys are the first ones I met. And I'm doing the fat, I don't know, I guess you guys are not, you're not the fat, maybe?
Oh, yeah, they all, we all moved like from Oliver and Crystal Beach to this place. They didn't move there until after I, I moved here in 88, 87. But I'm over there now.
Yeah.
I guess so.
Yeah, my other cousin, Rodney, he used to come school over here.
They sent one of them around each other, just left.
Did it?
Negative.
They made us spell it too. Hey, brother, pretty good. Yes. You get a good picture? Smile a little bit?
Not a fairer, close one, I think. I didn't get to review it.
All right. Reconvene, the regular meeting at 10:04 AM, and there is no action for item 14, and I need one more motion.
I make a motion for adjournment?
Uh, second.
Motion of the second, all in favor. We are adjourned.
Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.